It is April the 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM. I am Michael O'Reilly, Chairman of the Commission. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm just going to briefly read the preamble here. This is a hybrid public meeting utilizing electronic equipment. May be accessed by the public either in person or electronically in real time as set forth herein below. Meeting will be conducted in part via electronic equipment pursuant to Connecticut law, Public Act 21-2. Guests may attend in person or remotely as noted in the agenda. This meeting will be recorded and made available on the town's website pursuant to state law. Written public comments and compliance with the guidelines for public participation and remote electronic meetings may be submitted after the close of the business of the meeting via electronic mail. Thank you. And next we're going to call the rolls, starting on my right.
Dominic Benetio.
Ryan Condon.
Leanna Brozzi.
Robert Westling, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, Alternate.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Sister Shroud, Recording Secretary.
Okay. This time I'm going to ask the general public if anyone is here tonight or online that has any questions or comments that would like to address the Commission on any topics or that are not before the Commission tonight or are not likely to become before the Commission in the near future. If there are any members of the public tonight, please make yourselves known or online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, then we'll move right to the public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight, first of which is SCP 2022-01, 24 Commerce Drive. Brian, do you have the notice?
Planning and zoning commission Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held April 21st, 2022. In accordance with CGS 8-70, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, April 21st, 2022 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting with access by phone and limited person attendees located at Monroe Town Council Chambers, 7 Penn Hill Road, Monroe. SCP 2022-01, 24 Commerce Drive, I-2, special exception permit application for proposed construction of two commercial buildings and associated second movements located at 24 Commerce Drive, Westers Matt, Lot 023/00. Yearling Real Estate Group LLC, owner Spaff Bjorkland, Associates, representative. Notice was published twice in voices on Wednesday, April 6th and Wednesday, December 14th.
Okay, Rick, do you have the exhibits?
I did to see somebody.
Yes. And Dominic is up, so Dominic will be seated. And now the exhibits.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Exhibits, one, engineering comments. Number two, health department comments. Number three, revised plan submission. Number four, drainage report. Number five, revised engineering comments. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick. And for the applicant, we have...
My name is Larry Edwards, professor engineer with Professor's 27 September. Okay. What we need...
It's my...
Slide down.
No, you just kind of... You want to just pull that out?
Better?
I would... On the lap, you go left. 20. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir. I'd mind you here. Off to... Yes, sir. This is all...
No, no.
Right. This is all.
There's another one.
This is all. This is being impacted, screening.
This is to do with screening.
Everyone is muted. It's picking up.
It's picking us?
It's picking us, though.
It's supposed to be on the left, which is... We...
It's all... What about that? I want to do two. Still. It's all on stuff.
Uh... It doesn't pick up. But this video is through. Are we tearing off the audio?
Yeah.
We still have the feedback. I guess we're gonna have to hear ourselves a fuck. Can you hear us? Can you hear us on it?
Chair.
Yeah, it's just you can hear it double, but otherwise it's fine.
Okay. Volume on the top.
These are on, too.
Those, I don't think they're usually on.
Those are on. Get the pair of these off.
Right. At the end of the table.
How about now?
Ah, that was it.
Can we hear Sarah? Sarah, can you talk?
Those are on. Sure.
No, it's still doubled.
Better.
Double.
There's two sets of speakers here, that's what's going on.
Try now.
These aren't usually on.
Can you hear me now?
Sounds okay. Sarah, can you talk?
These aren't usually here.
Okay, now we can hear her.
Um, that's okay. I can at least understand what's being said now.
Okay. Still open.
That ball? Hang on. Hang on. One minute. I tell you.
There's no video or sound.
All right, you guys can hear us online?
Yeah, it sounds a lot better.
Okay.
Okay.
Whatever you did, you did it.
All right, leave it alone, then.
All right. Why are you...
Don't anyone touch anything.
Yeah.
Okay. Continue. The property we're discussing tonight is Commerce Road. It's the end of Commerce Road. It's a 3.2 acre parcel, which is owned in District 2, I-2, and presently vacant. And we are looking to construct two new buildings on the site. One is the primary owner and will be occupying. One is runs a pool operation, so that will be used as his... The pool maintenance or construction business. And the other one will be used as rental for contractor, individual contractor facilities for small contractors. The site is... Will be serviced by sanitary or by septic systems and there is a... Wells. The amount of usage, you know, is considerably less than would be normally for industrial building or commercial building. We are presently, we have gotten our approval from... And we have not yet been before the Architecture Review Board, which means whatever we do is going to have to be continued here tonight. We also have a... There was some items that came back from the county engineer that we have addressed, but we didn't want to submit them until we got the final from ARB and then do it in one shot. There is basically, the site is, as I said, is vacant. It will be done off. From the road, there is a retaining wall proposed along the rear of the property. Wetlands, again, are along the back, would be the right side of the property. You know, we are not proposing any activity within the wetlands. And we, as I said, we have a retaining wall, kind of a sloped retaining wall in the back. And stormwater will be handled and treated by an in-ground infiltration system, which is shown in the middle of the, between the two buildings. Septic systems for each of the two buildings are located to the rear along Commerce Road. There'll be a single driveway coming off of Commerce and an open area which is serviced. We've got, this is included in the, in the plan set, a erosion control plan. We have a landscaping plan. Let's see if I can get... This is our erosion control plan, landscaping plan, which is detailed out and is prepared by a landscape architect and a proposed lighting. That plan is included also. But basically, it's the two buildings and a small parking area for the employees and the access out to Commerce Road. As I said, we know that we're gonna have to have the... We submitted to ARB, but they have not had any, so we could not get any action from them. We also have a plan set showing basically the construction of it. You know, it's a very simple, you know, that leaves the garage doors out on the front side, which will service two sort of plays for contractors. And obviously, the one building will be for the proposed owner. It's basically the set on the application.
Okay. But on questions from the commissioners, let's start my right with Dominic.
They haven't gone at all with you.
No, they have not had a meeting. They were supposed to have a meeting that was still going on. We understand that nothing can happen. We need to move forward.
The water infiltrators are going to impact the septic wells. The water infiltrators are going to be...
No, the infiltrators are all on the back. It'll basically, the site, the high point of the site is right about in the center of where the buildings are. It slopes down to Commerce Road and it slopes down to the wetlands in the back. The infiltrators on the back part of the slope, which will drain, groundwater lines will drain toward the wetlands and the septic will be...
So when you said that you want to rent one building to a contractor, do you have any idea what kind of contract?
No, it hasn't progressed that far. I mean, he's obviously building a facility for his own. I think he's going to start with one building and do it in Vegas, which is a good deal for himself. And then shortly, you know, after he gets tenants, you'll construct the second one.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure that contracts parking trucks on the outside.
No, I mean, it's got to comply with all your regulations. I mean, it's, anything has all the vehicles from, I think, the zone, separate parking area. And it's, again, it would be efficient to have one truck, maybe two trucks, that will be their facility here, is what we, you know, we need to rent.
Thank you.
And no outdoor storage, right?
Do they have restrooms and stuff in these buildings? And on the, you said one's going to be a pool contractor?
Yes.
Gonna have chemicals stored there?
I'm sure there would be some, but again, that would have to be in accordance with, you know, building and state. If you're moving inside, it will be outside.
And how many parking spots you got there? I ain't counting. It's like you got the wrong back, too.
Yeah, the wrong back is where they are.
Forty. Forty? So you're just putting up just basic steel buildings and there's no... You haven't been in front of Architectural Review Board?
No, no. So it'll, no, they just, it's proposed to be just strictly steel sided buildings, you know, roofed, steel sided.
Any more concrete floors?
Yes.
Any drainage in the buildings?
I don't know, I think proposed inside.
All right, we're gonna leave this open anyway, because I want to see what architecture review there has to say. And I don't have Scott's comments, I don't see him, so...
Scott had comments, we have some comments, we're ready to submit them in tonight. We said, let's just wait till ARB, because they may have to come back with something they want changed. There's no set of submitting, two sets of plans.
Was there any big comment that you disagreed with?
No, we addressed all those comments.
So the owner's going to occupy one whole building?
Yes.
Correct? What, how many tenants is he planning on putting in the other building?
I think you can see the doors if you go to the... Say there's, you know, four doors, two entrances, so it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of four tenants, is what it's worth.
Four tenants. And where is the, the reserve septic fields?
The reserves are right next to the existing.
Okay.
Just down below the existing.
Off on the left side.
All right. And again, it isn't a large, you know, water use course, you know, because it's just going to be, you know, handful of people, you know.
That's all I have.
All my questions are answered.
Okay, it looks pretty good to me. I see Schatzline's comments here don't really amount to very much.
No, there was nothing major.
So let's go to the public, unless, Rick, do you have any comments?
No, this, the, the meeting that staff's recommending is May 19th. ARB meets, reseating Tuesday.
Okay. All right, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on the application before us? Please come forward.
My name is Michael Lantelini, I'm the one residential...
You gotta come up to the mic or they won't...
Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's Michael Lantelini, 31 Garter Road. I appear to be the only residential neighbor here, so I'm to the south of this property.
Can we go back to the first page?
So I see the existing topo map and how there's going to be a lot of... Can we see what a proposed topo map looks like?
Uh, this is, this is the topo. Maybe this is the center of every level, this is...
I realize that.
There's...
What did you say your address was?
31 Garter.
Got it.
You read your property in relation on this map?
It's the name on the bottom, like, like, maybe.
I can. Okay.
It's the south.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, right here.
I can't see, I don't think. Yeah.
Go down.
Like this wall is about, you know, six feet high, I think, along this back side.
Six feet.
But on your side, basically, the buildings, these drop down here, there's two, four, six, there's six further dropped right here. So the building is the, basically, it's going to be about six feet higher than the existing grade. It's just not major, it's not building a lot smaller. There's about six feet.
Okay, not, not on that side. On the east side.
Or if you're six, no, not really, I mean, you're, you're six feet here, it might be seven or eight feet here. Again, that's, it's a sloped wall, it isn't a straight high wall. It's going to be maybe, yeah, yeah, basically, it's long.
And what's that side yard set that, that is, that's...
I believe it's 25 feet.
25.
And we're, you know, this is the closest, you're probably 30 feet here, by the time you come up to here, you're about 50 feet in this area.
Okay. And where the motorport is, the, to the south of that, there's two boxes, what are those? Those are two guys. If that's two... Can I see the light? By putting lighting back there? It's just...
There's one light that's on the inside of the, of the side. So, so this line right here is the impact of that light, lighting is where that is. So it's here. Inside the building, black down.
And that's the planting?
Yeah. There's plantings in there.
And that has to be done?
Okay, that has to be. Our obligation.
And like the evergreens or...
These are evergreens, these darker colored ones. Would be shade trees and small shade trees and bushes. We will have some shade trees.
Wetlands approve this? What else? Anything else?
Uh, that would be one of the... What you see is what the commission is going to approve and any modifications to this plan will require...
God said it was a special use permit, so...
Nothing proposed. There's no manufacturing proposed.
Proposed, okay, so it'll be no manufacturing.
Unless we come back and modify...
They'd have to come back for this.
It would be another meeting with the public here.
Another notice?
Yes.
Yes. Because I already have one manufacturer back in me and all I smell is smoke all the time, fumes all the time, and I hear it constantly. It's just a, it's turned, it's turned bad. Anyway, this is just making it worse. Okay, I don't think it's...
Thank you, Mr. Lantelini. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? If there are any members online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, then we'll go back to the applicant.
We have nothing else to talk to you tonight from...
All right, we have a question.
I have another question.
All right, let's go back to the commissioners. Go ahead, Dominic.
Since we're putting a commerce piece next to residential, we would like this screening along that line, not just what I see there.
We could take, take a look at that, sure.
Okay, we're only talking about a small portion of the property. And it's going to be elevated. Okay. Anything else, Dominic?
That's it, thank you.
All right. Are these buildings going to be air conditioned or anything like that?
I honestly have no idea. I would have...
We don't have any of that stuff on this place.
And stuff like this, they usually have an office inside of the, of the main area that they would have as, as maybe air conditioning, but the rest of it's storage and truck storage and that wouldn't normally be air conditioned.
Well, yeah, but you're gonna put that stuff in later on. We'd like to know where it's going to be.
I will check. I honestly don't know, so I can't answer that question without...
And how many bathrooms are you going to have in each one of them?
Well, there'd be one bathroom for the facility that the owner's going to use and then one for each one. Well, there'd be one bathroom for the facility that the owner's going to use and then one for each one.
See, none of those are on the plan. There's nothing on the plan that shows where those bathrooms are going to be or anything like that.
They will be in the, these. Our site plan is governed by the size of the building, not by the number of bathrooms.
No, I haven't.
On your building plans, you know, I, I was going to, my next thing was, we can have them show that where they're going to be.
Yeah, I want to see where the utilities are going to be, where we plan to put that stuff because it's going to make a difference for the neighbor. It's going to make a difference for, for the project. So you're going to bring that back to us?
I will bring it back.
One other thing, like I just wanted to ask about the hours that the owner depended on having. You know, for security purposes or anything like that, obviously with a neighbor close by, you know.
What I'm trying to do is have the owner here next, at the next meeting, so that he can, because I, you know, I can't answer that, those questions and I don't want to give you false information. So let me work on getting him here so he can be.
Or have him join on Zoom, yeah.
Yeah, online, yeah.
Can you show me again where the dumpsters were? I'm sorry. I was taking notes. All right. And is there an opportunity to talk to the owner about moving those for, you know, Mr. Antolini? Because typically they get dumped, I don't know, early in the morning, late at night, but you know, that might reduce some of the noise pollution for him and his family.
Look at that. I mean, we have an area up here. Maybe we could do something.
Okay.
Up in this area. Yeah, we'll take a look.
Okay, thank you.
Don't mean to interrupt. I am Tom Santal. I'm representing the owners on the property here on Zoom.
All right, okay, go ahead.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What questions did we have? Oh, the.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation.
Yeah, so our hours of operation are typically Monday through Friday. We normally arrive at around seven thirty and most of our guys are typically back between four and five o'clock in the evening. During our busy season, we do operate on Saturdays, never on Sundays.
And that's for your operation?
Yes, that's correct.
And for, on the rental operation deal, you're going to keep those same hours?
So our, our plan is to occupy a portion of the first building that we plan on building or the second building with different sorts of trades. And so they would determine their own operating hours. But our, our thought and our philosophy behind it is that, you know, these will be tradespeople who typically work during the day.
So you wouldn't.
We do not have any tenants under lease or anything like that at this point.
No, I know. I understand that. But I'm saying that, you know, for the neighbor's sake and for, because you're so close to that property that we would like to get some kind of a timeframe of your operation for your rentals and for your home. But I got you. I know what your hours are going to be, but.
Right.
Rental, I mean.
It's not going to know until he runs them.
Yeah, I guess I won't know and I don't know if I can particularly dictate the hours of an independent business. But it is definitely our intention to rent to folks who work, you know, during the daytime hours. Nothing typically in the evening.
Okay. And then I was asking about the utilities, about with the air conditioning and stuff. You're going to air condition those buildings?
We don't, we do not have a concrete plan to air condition them. We were thinking that if the individual units would be air conditioned, they would likely be done with mini split systems, smaller air handler units. I do believe that we did have a location for those equipment pads, but I'm not sure exactly where it is on the plan or it is. I have seen them in previous plans.
What's that?
I have seen those in previous.
See them on the plan, so.
Just saying, I think they're in the back of these buildings.
Yeah.
I think this is where the air conditioning.
Is that what those dots mean back there?
That's landscaping.
Those are plants.
That's landscaping.
That's landscaping.
Okay, now I don't see anywhere on the plan. So if you could put something on the plan.
Of course.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
And what about the phasing? Do you have a timeline for the construction of the second building?
You know, we, we really don't. Our idea is to construct the first building, get in there and see what the demand is for tenants, get our feet under us, so to speak, and then determine when we want to build the first building. Likely within two to three years, build the second building.
Rick, how long do they have?
Five years and then you get a request and extension.
Five years, okay. All right, thank you. That's all my question.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, so to be clear, after you build the first building, you're going to want to move in and occupy it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're all aware of that. Okay. For the record.
I'm used to seeing plants coming in with air conditioning, HVAC units.
I got it on my list.
Because we don't want to know where they're going to put all those items. So they will come in with those improvements in.
That's what we're going to do for the next meeting.
Yeah, because like, you know, like we don't have that on there. You could put them on the roof. We would know that.
No problem.
Okay.
Doesn't need an area.
Any other commissioner questions?
Well, I just think for the next meeting, just firm things up and make it easier for everybody. Some of the things we want to see is more screening.
Yep.
Phasing the neighbor, the equipment on the plan, lighting and the timing of the lighting also. Just, just would rather not see the light on a timer or a non-timer and just lit all night long.
And dumpster location.
And dumpsters, yeah.
All right, if there isn't anything else, then we'll hold this hearing open until our next meeting, which is.
Nineteenth, May nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Second public hearing tonight is. Application two dash oh seven dash five dash A I, a permit approval amendment modification. And he notices Commissioner Condon.
In accordance with CGS eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, April 21st, 2022, 7:00 PM. Or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting with access via phone and in limited in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall Council Chambers. Two zero seven S A one sixty-seven Enterprise Drive I two. Permit approval amendment modification application for proposed construction of 6,000 square foot storage building and 3,300 square foot building addition in addition to installation of associated drainage system and utilities located at 67 Enterprise Drive. Accessory map ninety-four, lot fifteen slash twelve. Philip Pataglia, owner, Jay Edwards and Associates LLC representative.
Thank you. Do you have the.
Notice was published twice in voices.
Exhibits, Rick.
Exhibit number one. Inland wetland engineering comments. Number two, response to engineering comments from the applicant. Number three, health department comments. For. Comments from the engineer. And that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Looks like we have Mr. Ed. Thus again.
For the record, Larry Edwards, professional engineer of offices two twenty-seven Stephanie Road in Easton. Specifically, the site contains an existing building that is being used. It's a manufacturing, fabrication company, machine company, and they are looking to provide additional storage and are proposing a new building, 6,000 square feet rear of existing building. And that building will be used again totally for storage. There will be no restroom facilities. There will be no office or anything else. It's just full of dry storage. And we have gone to the inland, because there is a small strip of wetlands right kind of to the back of the building, between the two buildings. And that requires us to go to the inland and get a permit, which we have done. So this building will be standalone building. They also, when we went to the wetlands, we showed a proposed building expansion onto the existing building. They are not intending to do that at this point. So as far as for your application, it'll be strictly for the proposed new building. We show it as a future addition. We wanted to make sure we could get the wetlands permit at the time, but they are not looking to do that without coming back to you later date. We've been, we've designed a stormwater system. For the additional runoff that was generated. This portion of the site, basically, the impervious area is really just a building. And that's located just in front of the building, discharge into the weapons. And there'll be some additional paving, regrading. Just the party stay the same. Provisions on the inside of the building, no restrooms, no other services that would be there besides, you know, lights, lights, no heating. And that's basically just kind of the application. In the same scenario, in this application, we have not been to ARB, so. Again, there was a couple of comments from Scott, which I think we might have even submitted the plans, but we haven't seen them. But we're going to hold on those until we get ARB comments. So we can trust those all in one session. Get to Eddie your next question. But there's nothing of any major change that you're.
Okay, let's go to the commissioners. We'll start on my left with Commissioner Lou probably this time.
I have no questions. Just, I'm glad to see that they're looking to stay in Monroe and expand rather than look elsewhere. So I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
No question.
So that building is just going to be used for storage?
Loading dock, there's a loading dock we're proposing on it and then a couple of. Curbside, you know, driving.
Bathrooms in there.
Nothing.
You said no heating or?
I don't actually know if they're going to have a heater or not. Obviously with the air condition for any reason, but with supplies, they may want to heat it, but I don't even know if they're going to want that. I can find that out for you.
That'd be good. So we're going to leave it open again, right?
And we do have a lengthy plan. We've done some additional.
Yeah, I was looking at that.
Will there be additional lighting?
I think we have a lighting plan also. If it is, it's going to be strictly, probably look at a building light on the outside of this building because this is all lighted already. But I'll take a look at that for the next.
Okay. Okay, okay. Commissioner Condon, sorry.
No questions.
An audition.
I have a question. The existing business there now, what do they produce?
I don't know. It's a machine company, machining company. I don't really know what they produce.
So the storage will be whatever they do for, whatever they require?
Basically, both ends, I would imagine, storage of raw materials and storage of finished product, you know. Right now, I think they're, they're pretty much maxed out and so. I'm sure we're still going to have inside. Other buildings probably increases their capacity of workspace inside.
Then at this point, we're going to, Rick, do you have anything?
I know, Mr. Chairman. I'll, we'll be reporting after the ARB meets in a couple of weeks.
All right. Are there any members of the public online? The audience that would like to comment on this application? So I'll please raise your hand. The hand will come up. Where's that?
On the screen.
I don't see anyone. Would any other members of the public that would like to comment on this application?
No hands.
Here are none. The commissioners have any other questions? If not, back to you, Mr. Edwards.
That's it for me. I've got a couple of your comments. We'll take a look at those and hopefully we can get ARB to act before the next meeting.
All right, then we will hold this hearing open as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving to the final public hearing, SCP 2022 dash oh two one twenty-six Main Street.
In accordance with CGS eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, April 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting with access via phone and in limited person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. SCP 2022 dash oh two one twenty-six Main Street B two, special exception permit application for proposed gas station and convenience store located at one twenty-sixth Main Street. Accessory map zero one two slash lot zero thirteen slash zero zero. South Main Street, Newtown Associates LLC, owner Rose Tizzo, company representative. Notice was published twice in voices on April sixth and April thirteenth.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Rick, you have the exhibits.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, exhibit number one, DOT comments. Number two, plans. Number three, engineering comments from the town engineer. And that is all, Mr. Chairman.
And for the applicant tonight, we have.
Just like to quickly go through project for you and then I'll have Steve Santa Crosta, engineer, go through the drainage and septic and things like that. And then we have Kermit Bla, our traffic engineer, who will go through the traffic study. Building before anybody, one twenty-sixth Main Street, probably familiar with this block, I assume. In their long time, we've been occupied the lot. Not just on one side, Main Street, small inch repair on the other side. The existing building, we're contemplating turning that into a convenient store and gas station for this existing building. We'll be taking down this canopy and we'll be utilizing the retaining walls that are on site will be left in place. They work out quite well with how the site can lay out. Our proposal is to put the gas station pumps up front, make some modifications to the two entrance drives that exist currently. Then it will have parking out in front of the convenience store and parking on the side of the convenience store. That's what parking be to the rear. We're going to maintain this driveway that goes down to the back and change it slightly to make it more accessible. Because there is storage in the bottom of this building that the owner, who owns several other gas stations, would like to use that storage for his additional stock that he would be supplying to the other gas stations. So there's, there's space that can be utilized. Well, we've gone to wetlands, had a presentation, fairly well received, but they were unable to act on it because of technical difficulties that might be, so.
You don't have a wetland approval yet.
I do not because we went through the whole thing, but they, they left. And then we heard that they zoomed, zoomed kicked out and they couldn't finish their meeting.
So you don't know if they're going to require you to change that plan at all?
I, I don't believe so. We, we have responded to the town engineer's requests at that meeting. An agreement with them, so I don't see that we're changing this plan based on that. What we have done as part of that is remove the fence that's along the back by the brook. Wall, big wall comes down. It's all in the back. We're taking out a significant portion of pavement in this location. Turning it back into water type plantings, grass seed, and then. And then actually pulling it back to some of the pavement from this rear drop off area. What we've done is to try and satisfy the town engineers. We made modifications to curb cuts. Made modifications to this access. Steve will go through that with the letter that we responded to Scott with. The building itself will be reused, repurposed. This section, which is one of the older sections, is probably in the worst shape. Will be rebuilt so that we can change the roof on it. Right now, roof slopes in a long way. So what we'll be doing is rebuilding this portion, but still we'll be there in the same footprint. Entrance to the store will be here, the Adeli service area, the sales here. Items for purchase here, and then walk-in coolers and some storage in the back. Typical convenience store layout. Bathrooms here. Public bathrooms on this side, some storage for this Deli area. Be a little patio on the outside, people could sit outside. Second floor, this is the basement. There are a couple of garage doors in here that will be able to store things in. Second floor, which is an accessory from the stairway, there's an area for some possible storage. We have talked, Rick, about in the future potentially using this as a business and residences above. We're not doing that right now. It's just something, an idea that has been floated, voted by, but we're not pursuing that at the moment. Gone to the architectural review board and they have given us a favorable recommendation associated with the building. We did the front elevation. This is the rebuilt section where we're raining a sloped roof and then giving this new entrance into the building. New entrance is actually, we're relocating the luxury style door that exists there, which is in very good shape. Repurposing it for this and repainting it. So it works with everything else. New vinyl siding, new roofs on the building. So this is pretty straightforward. On the side, there's a now and a new storefront to the convenience store side. Pretty much overview. I'll let Steve go through the many grade associated with the building.
Good evening. My name is Steve Stamos. Professional engineer in St. San Francisco. So I'll just go through the plan set. Pat went through. So on SP1. See, we have our single gas pump in the front of the building. That really accesses. And we did receive comments from the DOT that we incorporated with this plan set such as making these curb cuts radiuses a little larger for truck access. And you can see we have a truck turning, turned on for SU30 vehicle. And one revision with this plan set we made is to make this radius a little wider so that the truck can actually back into the storage area and then egress this way. As Pat mentioned, we are actually pulling back from the wetlands. Pulling back currently this whole area up to the existing fence in SP. So we're removing from back of this retaining wall. And we're actually removing a little bit of heat in here to provide some stormwater control in that area. To get until more of that, so it's SP2. Creating a drainage plan. So since we're removing pavement, we're going to be reducing the runoff from the site. And we're actually going to be further reducing that by providing stormwater tension systems here. And, you know, we went through it on wetlands and Scott had some comments on those. I think we answered those, you know, further out. Comment letter that he provided for the stormwater control. We also had the back to the rear of the property. We also particularly proposed a new septic system that we received approval from a company for. See, we did several test pits. So it's a best degree. We have erosion control. What Scott wanted us to do is to explain how that area has the kind of a phase one construction. And on site, as we're sure, we're going to have another septic fence. Just. So it's actually, it looks like that track with that, so it's. We have a landscape plan that we prepared. We have some erosion control seed mix. Wetland, wetlands.
Is that wetland or is off your?
No, this is off the review. The wetlands line is.
Okay.
Back here. We're going to, you're not going to.
They paved into the wetlands?
We're not going into the wetlands.
They were paved into the wetland?
You mean the existing? No, the wetlands line.
Yes.
We have a lighting plan. We're just showing that we're zero light levels at the property line. Here we have details of septic system. So also provided the comments that we received on Tuesday from Scott. I can go through the, you know, the kind of the major ones quickly if that's.
Go ahead.
First section of his comments were had to do with the inland wetland application, but I think these were more comments that he was okay with us moving ahead with through inland wetlands. There's one about a, doing a test pit. Turn the last one. In this area for the underground storage. We have several test pits already at the site. Now, I don't, we don't anticipate that the material in that area is going to be significantly different than the other test pits that we have done. And we will do a test.
Well, you're putting underground storage tanks there, right? That we're putting them?
For the guests?
Yeah.
Those will go here. Yep.
So that's why he wants a test pit to see if there's any water there?
Well, yeah, he was talking more about the gallery system right there. But we have, you know, we will do one prior to construction. So that was kind of our.
Yeah, but I may change it.
Um. Yeah, we don't anticipate that it's going to be different than the the water, you know, the water table is pretty consistent throughout the site, especially in that area because, you know, this is a wetland area back here. Oh, you're actually going.
Close to flood link.
Yeah. Right back. That was one of his comments. Another comment that he had was about the survey. He originally had the survey with the so provided our survey. Using GPS survey equipment, initial survey equipment. So as far as this application, we just had we have one comment about the driveway radius. Which I incorporated into the just one of these driveway radiuses to be increased. Then, you know, we show the SU30 can turn into the site and egress on that radius without crossing.
What's an SU30 size? Just a box truck, right?
It's a thirty foot box truck.
Taking consideration the tanker truck?
Yes.
And how are you going to get that in there?
So the tanker truck, we actually show on our plan, but.
I don't see anything on the plan showing a tanker truck coming in or turning a radius or anything like that. We would need to see that.
Yep. No problem. We actually, I actually, we had those on our plan, but it was kind of too cluttered, so.
Yeah, but that's, that's a major concern because you, you have to get that truck in and out of there. And I didn't know how.
He saw that we could do that. You know, we, they would come in and go out, come in one entrance, go out the other.
We do have to go on to the other side of the road to get that truck in there.
No, we can make it with the.
You're going to have to show that on.
Yeah, we'll show them on our plan. Yeah.
And have our engineer take a look at that plan.
Yeah, he, yeah, that's, this is why he gave a comment about the SU30.
Yeah, I got that, but that's just a thirty foot box truck. You can get that in there without going on the other side of the street. I don't know how you're going to get a tanker truck in there.
Understood, yeah. We'll show that on.
Going into, into work. You're going to have to show me all that. Either incoming traffic or even when you're trying to make your radius in there to fill that. I don't know how you're going to do it, so you're going to have to show that in the plan.
Yeah, we can add a WB. He also has a comment about the SU30 turning around in this area, which is why I've revised the radius here. Just to show that it accesses this area and egress out the parking area.
You have a question? You don't show a sidewalk in front of this place?
Yeah, we do show a sidewalk.
You do have it there? I didn't see it.
In front of the building or on the property, on the roadside?
On the roadside?
Yeah, in the road. Yep.
You see that? Good.
Okay, so those are the major comments that I wanted to go over and so I'll turn it over to Kermit.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of commission, for the record. Kermit Waugh, KWH Enterprise LLC, Monroe, Connecticut. I'll just very briefly go over the traffic study and the comments, traffic comments we received from the town. I did the traffic counts for this study looking at the, you know, primarily the side driveways and the main signal, signalized intersection of Main Street, Jut Tree and Purdy Hill Road north of the site on Route 25. I did the counts in January 2020 this year for the weekday morning, weekday afternoon and the Saturday midday peak hours. That sort of ties into one of the comments I received from the town. Question, questioning whether there needs to be adjustment for the assumed COVID volume reduction. Since this year, this kinetic DOT, kinetic DOT's practice has been, they encourage us go out to do the counts as opposed to, you know, in the past two years, they don't even accept any counts just because of the COVID. So just the reason being, most of volumes has reverted to pre-pandemic levels. So that's one. The second is I also checked my counts with the pre-pandemic counts. DOT last time they collected on Route 25, just north of Jut Hill Road intersection. That was in 2013, nine years ago. That's the most recent they have. Generally comparable, so we pretty much return to normal traffic volumes. So the second thing I looked at is the, you know, the traffic generated by the gas station. As you know, most of the gas station traffic are pass-by traffic. That is people already driving on Main Street. They make a stop at the gas station, you know. If you're going northbound, you make a right turn, keep going northbound. So the IT Institute of Transportation Engineer estimate typically around sixty-two percent of the customer of the traffic is this kind of pass-by traffic. So these are not net new traffic. These are existing traffic on the road. The only difference is they make a left, turn into the driveways and make a turn out of the driveways. So if we exclude those sixty-two percent, the net increase this gas station is generating for each three, for each of the three peak hours are six. Sixty-two for the weekday morning peak hour, fifty-two for the weekday afternoon peak hour, and forty-seven for the Saturday midday peak hour. Just put those numbers in perspective for the busiest weekday morning peak hour, sixty-two new trips accounts for about two point eight percent of the existing hourly traffic on Main Street. So, you know, if you look at the net new trip numbers, that's, you know, it's a pretty big number, but not quite significant number just because we have so much traffic on Main Street. And by the way, that is reason where gas stations want to locate here because, you know, that's where the customers are. I did analysis for looking at the level of service and delays for the driveway intersections and the signal, signaling intersection to the north. There are some level service ENF for through traffic movements and also for the westbound Purdy Hill Road approach at the signaling intersection. That is, you know, delays talking about northbound, southbound and westbound traffic during peak hours. That, those are existing conditions, you know, I don't think these are, you know. And it has not, not much to do with the proposed gas station development. However, we do, I do think there will be some delays, especially for traffic exiting the gas station driveway, especially during the weekday morning hours. Mostly left turns, right turns, actually right turn in and right turn out are generally not a problem. The main issue is left turns, primarily left turn exiting the driveways, you know, as you as many gas station customers can test, actually, our gas station is not really located at a signaling intersection. It's way away from the signaling intersection. So that's, I will say, it's a even better traffic conditions than typical, your typical gas station, everyday gas stations. So that ties into the two comments I received from the town. Because of these potential delays at the driveway, exiting driveway, left turns. The comment B is evaluation the need for a southbound left turn lane and bypass. I looked at the width of Main Street in front of the driveway. It appears to be about like thirty-six to thirty-seven feet, just, you know, from curb to curb. Seems like probably we will be able to accommodate bypass, but I'm not sure. So we need, the civil engineer and the surveyor are collecting more survey information. Just make sure that works, the bypass. The way DOT bypass works is they require, in this case, is a southbound bypass because southbound left turn lane, when they make a, waiting to make a left turn, they're going to block the through traffic. They are recommending a practice of a total width of twenty feet for the southbound lane and the southbound shoulder. In other words, you have a left turn so people can go by it, you know, drive on the shoulder. In other words, you have a left turn, so people can go by it, you know, drive on the shoulder. Uh, again, there, there's something we're looking at, actually looking at, we are collecting information to see that's feasible. Uh, the other comment, uh, from the town is, uh, whether, uh, we can, uh, turn those two driveways into one-way pairs. That's sort of related to the bypass, you know. Uh, so we, we're also looking at the options. Uh, for me, from a pure traffic, uh, delay perspective, the, the issue, like I said, it's just really the. The left turn delays because you have X number of left turn during the peak hour. Whether you put it in this driveway or that driveway, that really doesn't make much difference, you know, in terms of the. Delays experienced by, uh, these drivers. But I think we are fortunate at a location, uh, that's really not very close to a, the, the, the traffic signal. Uh, the other mitigating factor I can. I, I think we have is because we do have a signal and we do have a, uh, 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 a diagonal road called Old Newtown Road. If you remember, if you go north, you know, make a right turn on the Old Newtown Road, then you can make a left turn onto Purdy Hill Road. So it's almost like a jack handle. If you feel you're, you know, waiting too long to turn left out of driveway, maybe that's an option, you know, turn right. Out to Main Street, then Old Newtown Road, then turn left onto Purdy Hill, then, you know, make a U-turn that way through the signal safely. So that's also a mitigating factors. So I, you know, overall, I think, uh, the delays. For the driveway, for the gas station driveways, that's just nature of this kind of development, uh, we are, we are, you know, the customer, uh. The owner obviously is looking for a high, uh, traffic location and in this case, we are fortunate. It's not, uh, located exactly at a signal and, uh, uh, we, we are trying to work with the town and work with state DOT, uh, you know. To mitigating the, uh, uh, the, any delays and make sure it works for customers and for town. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
So the state is re- requesting a, a left turn lane?
They are not requesting, they're coming later also mentioned, you know, asking us to explore the option. Come in and also ask us to explore over here to, to see if it's feasible. Obviously, we want to make sure the width of the road is feasible. We don't want to eat into the northbound lane just to accommodate alternative.
So you're looking to see if there's room for a.
The bypass lane, southbound bypass lane.
Bypass?
Right.
Okay. Not a striped lane, just a.
Not a striped lane, also, yeah, it's just a normal twelve-foot lane, then a very wide shoulder, eight-foot shoulder.
To see if cars can get by.
Yeah, cars can.
All right, any, uh, other question? Well, let's start on my left again.
I guess I have questions, but I'm just, come back to me, because I'm still mulling.
I have comments. I mean, it's, um, yeah, I, I know the lot and it's, it's much deeper and narrower. Than you would typically see a gas station going into and I, I am concerned about a tanker getting into that lot. I can't personally visualize it, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide the truck turning. We just turned that layer off because Scott had a comment about the SC thirty truck and I. When I'm looking at the plan, I can't see a SC thirty turning template and a WB fifty turn on at the same time, just like hurts my, uh.
Yeah.
Eyes to look at, so.
It, it's something that, you know, we're gonna need to take a hard look at because it's, it's, that's gonna be for sure, you know, we're gonna have tankers pulling into that location.
Yeah, and I understand because it's on the plan, so you can't visualize it.
Yep.
Basically, they come into one driveway, they loop around and back, but. Pumps, they come around, they exit the other driveway.
Yeah, that makes sense, but like Rob, I know that property very well. Growing up here and I just, in my mind, can't see the room. With the tanks there and cars parked.
There's some covered storage.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
You're coming back, so.
Yeah.
We're coming back, yeah, um, because we didn't. Close with inland.
Okay.
And, you know, uh, another comment is on the, the topography of the, of the property is also something that you don't typically see. I mean, it drops down quite a bit at the back. So the storm, uh, water management, and we're gonna take a hard look at, I mean, it's a gas station, cars leak, that kind of thing happens. You have the, the, the river back there. Um, it's great that there's gonna be a little bit of a, of a, uh, of an area there that's, you're gonna get rid of the, uh, the paving, but, you know. There's definitely gonna be some runoff going, going back there because it drops off big time.
Yeah, that's why Scott had some initial comments with, uh, our inland waterlands application that we kind of worked through within. In this comment letter, he actually, uh, um, saying, you know, most of them, he feels like they're resolved for the most part. From a stormwater management standpoint.
Yep. And then the last concern is of course what we just heard, the ingress and egress, you know, the bypass lane makes it in my mind possible, you know. But without it, it would, uh, it would be a disaster trying to pull in and out of there and cross the road at peak hours, anytime for that matter, let alone at peak hours.
Right, I agree, Commissioner. By the way, I looked at the, uh, neighbors to the north. Uh, we have a Dunkin' Donuts here, uh, we have a Duchess restaurant. If you go northbound on Dunkin' Donuts, make a left turn into the first driveway, there is no bypass. I don't know whether that's the issue for the town or not, you know. So it's not, it's something we're willing to look at, but it's not universally required, at least not universally implemented. It seems to me, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Main Street.
Yeah, the traffic just gets really backed up there. If someone is taking a left into Duchess. And the light is, it's, you have Duchess, you have Dunkin' Donuts and that gas station coming out. You have the pizza place coming out. There's possibly something else across the street going in, they're gonna be coming out, it's gonna be a lot of people going in a lot of different directions.
And a hundred eighty units.
Apartments.
Hundred eighty, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is, yeah.
We just don't wanna set you guys up to fail, you know, and, and see this not work, so we just wanna take a hard look at that. Just some concerns on my part.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Ambrose, so did you send out a new set of plans to the state about what they were asking their concerns?
Yes.
Because they were concerned about, I guess, a WB fifty vehicle crossing the line. Did you address that with them? And what was your comment on that?
Uh, we haven't, uh, heard back from them when we sent them our, our verified plans showing that the WB fifty can. Access and egress the site, um, but we have sent that to them and we're waiting on their. Second response, I guess.
All right, so.
So, yeah, they're gonna be taking a look at it as well.
All right, so did they give you a favorable thing on this yet until?
Not yet. I think they tend to take a little while.
Okay.
Is there a?
Yeah, I'm good for now.
Is there an elevation change between, uh, this property and the Duchess property?
Yes.
It does go down, right?
Yeah.
Gotcha. I was just wondering if shared parking might help, but. Uh, not with a retaining wall.
Yeah.
All right, that's it for me. Thanks.
I think some of the items have already been verbalized, but I have to repeat it. I'm hearing the comments from you and the traffic report. And I don't think we're talking about the same site that I'm see every day because I go by there every day. I think you took this in winter time, which is at the lowest time as a traffic count. You said that the report from the state was back in nineteen, two thousand thirteen. Uh, I mean, are we in a lolly land here?
Yep, I.
Let me finish, let me finish. You got there five or six other businesses. L, L and R, Duchess, the place, gas station across the street. Um, Dunkin' Donuts. A new site development of a major apartment site coming up. Right now, the traffic backs up in that light. Tremendous. It takes about ten to fifteen minutes, I drive there every day, for me to go from. To get to the light. Or vice versa. Now, the left turn coming out from the proposed gas station. It's almost. Impossible to get out of there during the traffic. Peak hours. Um, I don't know if you took that into account.
If I may respond, Commissioner.
Sure.
Uh, the first point is about the, the count, the time of the count in January. I did actually use the seasonal adjustment factor of kinetic, kinetic DOT, uh, to convert those numbers into peak summer month volumes. That is usually the June, uh, twenty twenty-two, you know, volumes. Uh, the factors I use are thirteen point two percent to increase the January volume for the weekday counts. And sixteen point eight percent for the Saturday count, so. Uh, the result you are seeing for the existing condition figure, those are the peak summer month volumes. Now about the, uh, the left turn, uh, about the delays, I agree, there, there is delays, uh, especially in the northbound, southbound approach. Of Main Street at a, in a Purdy Hill Road intersection, uh, you know. I, I, I can imagine if I'm the customer of this gas station, if I want to, uh, turn left to travel southbound on Main Street, I, I, I would do. Like I said, you know, make a right turn, then use Old Newtown Hill Road, or Old Newtown Road, then go on Purdy Hill Road and use that signal to make a left turn. Go southbound, so essentially making a U-turn, use that, using that signal. Uh, I, I think that's probably a more efficient way, but. I, I think, you know, like you said, those are peak hours. Of peak hours, you know. Probably you have, uh, less difficulty, uh, getting out of the driveway, making a left turn. So that is the reason we want to keep that option open, you know, we don't want to prohibit left turn exiting the drive.
Even during non-peak hours, it's hard to get out of there. Now, if you're a customer leaving the gas station, even taking a right turn, when you have backed up traffic. You're gonna be sitting there for at least ten, fifteen minutes before the light turns. If they want to let you in to slip in into the traffic. I mean, that's gotta be taken into consideration.
I respectfully disagree with the, you know, any, any delay left, uh, more than ten minutes or twelve minutes, uh. You know, I, you know, one or two minutes maybe. Uh, also, there is a, uh, the issue of a, a metering effect of downstream traffic. What I mean is, uh, uh, you have traffic, you know, every several. Intersections and the effect of that, you know, it's sort of cut off the through traffic. No matter how busy Main Street or Route twenty-five is, it create a gap, artificial gap, just by the virtue of those signals. So that's usually, at least you can make a right turn exit the dr- ex- exit the driveway, to exit the driveway. So I, I don't believe, uh, I, I believe there won't be delays, but not necessarily as dramatic as, as you described.
When was the last time that you were there, peak hours?
Uh, I, I did the counts, like, I, I, I sat there for six hours in January twenty twenty-two.
Why don't you try right around this time, see what happens? I, I was stuck there just two, two nights ago and I had a call my, my house telling me I'm stuck here, I can't get out. Anyway, it's a bad idea putting a gas station in the midst of all these other businesses in that particular area.
Well, to that, to that comment, uh, uh, Mr. Commissioner, you know, I, I, I commented earlier. This is not a, uh, sort of a greenfield residential intersection. This is a commercial intersection. There are existing commercial developments, other kind of developments, not necessarily, uh, have less traffic than we have. You know, the town will approve those comments, you know, I, my hope is, uh, the town applies the same traffic standard and same criteria. Among all these commercial developments, not sort of a pick this out for whatever reason. You know, we have a, uh, a Dunkin' Donuts there. I think they generate much more traffic than we have in the morning peak hour. And, uh, we are looking at a bypass lane for left turn into this, uh, the, the gas station driveway. Did the commission, uh, or the town, or road look at that stage bypass lane for Dunkin' Donuts when it was before the commission? Because I don't see it bypassed there and if you have a left turn, turning left into Dunkin' Donuts, you are gonna tie up the whole, whole, uh, northbound through traffic. So, you know, my, 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 my question is, I acknowledge there won't be some delays, uh, you know, my hope is really, uh, the same standard, uh, be applied, uh, to different applications. Thank you.
Yeah. Am I coming to that? Right, you take a left there, I go to the light, go up Judd and go around back. So that, that Dunkin' Donuts and that gas station has different ways to get out. You're not just relying on twenty-five. I think most people going south on twenty-five, if you need gas, they're gonna end up using the one on Judd. Because it's a right-hand turn.
Yeah.
And those going northbound are gonna hop in here, so I don't know how much crossing over.
That's what I do traveling one eleven.
Yeah, I mean, I, where.
I'm heading to where?
Side is where you're.
I'm going to the gas, all right?
My business.
And we can't really speak to the, the traffic studies that were conducted back then. You know, traffic studies happened and we don't have those in front of us, we can't speak to them, things change over time. They, they've changed, obviously.
Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah.
That was before this commission was seated.
And what, what were the counts? We talked about percentages. What were specifically the counts? The car counts?
The car counts, uh, you, what you're talking, you mean?
How many cars were going up and down the road?
Okay, let, let me take a look at it. You know, for, for our purposes, the busiest of access is weekday morning. Uh, looking at the intersection of Main Street and Purdy Hill Road, you know, if, if I take all of those turning movements, just going, look at through movements. Uh, one thousand thirty-seven going northbound, uh, Main Street, one thousand forty-three going southbound on Main Street.
And that helped many.
For, for, yeah.
Because typically I, I see these by the day, you know what I mean? And obviously it changes based on what time of the day it is. Do you have a, a day-to-day?
Usually the date is, you know, eight, data, usually you use a ten times the peak hour, you know. So, so, so it's one thousand usually the through movements excluding, like, again, those turning moments, you're talking about ten thousand, you know, vehicles.
So there's not an actual count that you've conducted over a twenty-four hour period?
Yes, I only, that, that is correct. I only counted six hours.
Okay.
And it, and to tell you the truth, a lot of times the gas stations, like, we've already done it down for Noble, we've done it for, um. What's the one that we just approved? They have right turn onlys out of the driveway.
It's an option.
But I think if you get in, but if you did a right turn only out of your driveway, you wouldn't be able to get a tractor trailer truck in there.
Well, you would go in the other.
Coming from the.
Subway driveway and then.
Yeah, we'd be able to turn around.
That's right turn only comes in here.
You'd still like be able to loop around the.
Pumps.
Parking.
There's a light.
But.
That's the difference.
Which is what we have to show or our WB fifty, which is not, unfortunately not on the plan in front of you.
And, you know. Yeah, and Noble has the light too, so it is a right turn only, but you also have the.
Light, right, traffic light.
Yeah.
But, uh.
The one you're big why?
No, the one that's on Main Street next to. Let's see, let me play some of the big plays.
Oh, the Noble.
Not Noble.
Noble, uh, the Comfort, Comfort.
We made them right turn over there because of the traffic over there. Um, I just don't see how you're gonna get that tractor trailer truck in there. I, you're gonna have to show that to me somehow. Without, without going over the other lane.
Well, they promised to do that.
Right.
And it's just a convenience store. There's no plan for like a name brand. Uh, restaurant or anything like that in there, like.
There's a deli, there's a deli that, that convenience store.
Like a little deli, okay. You know, like a Starbucks draws attention and would change drastically.
That's a little different.
I don't think they go in gas stations, but I know like Dunkin' Donuts does.
Okay, any other commissioner questions? Then we'll go to the, um, public if there are. Any members of the public online that have any questions concerning this application or comments, please raise your hand. Uh, once again, any members of the public online, in person that would like to raise any questions to the comments, please. Seeing none? Rick, do you have any comments?
No, I just want to advise the commission that, uh, we are awaiting comments from the local traffic authority as well, too.
Okay. DOT.
No, local, the town police department.
Oh, okay.
Local, not District Three.
So we'll have a lot more information in the turn. And we will keep this hearing open and we'll, it's a beautiful, uh, looking, um, business there. Big improvement from what's there now. I hope that we can.
So fun there.
Problems.
What was that that used to be?
Are we are. We used to buy your dirt bikes and your cars and your. That's right, wasn't it?
It was more fun, but.
Under these.
New owner of the, new owner?
It's, uh, it's the same owner currently, but the lease.
Same owner, okay.
Personal.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes the public hearings. We have no site plan, um, subdivision. We have a one. Pending application. This is one, the ZAA RAA twenty twenty-two dash one. So this, you have an approval, the commissioners. For the overlay district, the Pondview development, this is the first step of Pondview. This is not the S D D. Just last time allowing, I don't know, Rick, do you want to explain it a little bit?
Yeah, just to uh go over all the steps.
Right.
And because this is the first S D D. As the commission is aware, we have the Main Street Design District Overlay. That just identifies that geographically, all of twenty-five commercial areas of one eleven and commercial areas of thirty-four Roosevelt Drive. Uh this is the first S D D Special Design District that creates its own standards for this particular location in town. There is a another public hearing that is required because this is multifamily. It it requires the submission of an S E P. Now, the document that you have in front of you is the draft resolution, but also look at the attachment. The attachment is titled Special Development District Number One, Statement of Uses and Standards for the Pondview Development located at one twenty-seven Main Street. This document is a miniature zoning regulation. Uh staff will keep this uh in a separate binder for all future S D Ds. It is part of the Monroe zoning regulation family. So uh when this document gets totally completed, this is uh the the first draft. Uh staff will give each of the commissioners the final uh uh version of it. And I'll 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 give you it in a three-ring binder because clearly you want to watch this. This is uh special zoning and you want to look at it for reference purposes and obviously to keep track. We're also going to talk about it a little bit next Tuesday at our workshop because this is another tool for affordable housing. And as you know, this has a hundred and eighty-eight units. Ten percent or nineteen units will be uh affordable units. And I will discuss it too. The applicant has suggested that they take over the annual review of the income requirements for the affordable housing and the reporting to the town and to the state. So we need to incorporate that. The town does not have an agency that oversees the existing affordable housing. And that has been a little problematic. The staff has to go back and determine it. But the state does have a formula in determining both what rental uh price ranges have to be and what the sale of a single-family house, or for that matter, a multifamily, sales and for rental. There are formulas built in by the state. And staff has had to assist property owners that are selling uh their unit or their unit that is rented. We don't have too many. I don't think we have too many rental units, but owner occupied, staff has had to assist them in determining what the qualified buyer's income has to be. So once again, the applicant has agreed to take over that annual requirement and that is pretty good insofar as we don't have an agency. Okay. The uh resolution reads as follows, whereas the Monroe P N Z is considering the following zoning regulation text amendment and zone boundary map change. This is all-inclusive because you're putting an S D D one on the map and you're adopting specific standards for this property located at one twenty-seven Main Street. As set forth in the proposed Special Development District Number One, S D D Number One, within the Main Street Design District Overlay. Once again, the M D D geographically shows where these S D Ds can take place. The R A Z C A twenty twenty-two oh one file, uh ten twenty-one E S D D one at one twenty-seven Main Street, petition upon view LLC proposed zoning regulation text amendments by establishing uses, lot area and bulk standards as identified in the statement of uses and standards, which is attached for S D D Number One, as shown in conceptual plans titled Pondview Development dated ten twenty-seven twenty-one through three thirty twenty-two. As part of the S E P application, you will then see detailed development plans. And as I reported at the deliberation, you will make a determination that the S E S E P plans are substantially the same as what you saw in the conceptual plans. If they are significant in nature, you need to go back and have another hearing on the modification of the conceptual. If they're the same or substantially the same as determined by the commission and recommended by staff, then you can proceed. This will enable the construction of eight apartment buildings with a total of a hundred and eighty-eight dwelling units consisting of nineteen affordable housing rental units. A five thousand thirty-nine square foot clubhouse, a pool area with a pool house and other outdoor recreation areas for tenants and on-site parking for three hundred and eighty vehicles on a nineteen point six acre site located at one twenty-seven Main Street. Property is currently zoned commercial B one with a M D D overlay district. Property will be served by private subsurface septic system and public water supply. Primary site access is provided to Main Street Route twenty-six with a secondary access to Judd Road via an easement through an adjoining commercial property to the north. This is going the back of D and D and you uh recommended uh appropriate traffic times to accommodate the cars.
Rick, I have one question. I have in my notes that the clubhouse is going to be like seven thousand square feet. Has that changed?
Uh that's what I took off from the map, so.
Yeah, it's going to be at least ten thousand square feet. You're correct. Started at.
No, you cannot speak. Well, you can speak to me, Rick Schultz.
You have seen me.
Yeah.
Yes.
That was changed to seven thousand?
Yes, approximately seven thousand square feet.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, I stand corrected on that figure. The five thousand thirty-nine has evolved to seven thousand square feet.
Hey, great.
Thank you, Nicole. Whereas the electronic transmission of letters pursuant to Connecticut General Statute eight dash three B, notice of the proposed zoning action was referred and receipt acknowledged in a timely manner from the following regional planning agencies, Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments, Bogota Valley Council of Governments, Western Connecticut Council of Governments. Whereas the proposal was referred to the Monroe Health Department, where the copy of the proposed zoning action were duly filed with the Monroe Town Clerk and whereby notice of the below noted public hearing was published in the Voices twice. Whereas pursuant to Connecticut General Statute eight seven D and nine point two point four, the Monroe zoning regulation, the commission has considered the proposed zoning regulations text zoning map, a bounding map amendment at a duly public duly noticed public hearing opened on March twenty-fourth and closed on April seventh, twenty twenty-two, at which time interested parties were afforded an opportunity to be heard. Whereas written notice of the public hearing was sent to the budding property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property as evidenced by certified mail receipt. Whereas the commission did receive written and verbal comments regarding the zoning action. Whereas during the review of the zoning action, the commission noted the following, and please uh uh this have any discussion after I complete it. Some commissioners expressed their desire to provide elevator service to all or some of the buildings. There are eight buildings. The applicant indicated that they would prefer not to provide elevators insofar as we change the footprint. They will reserve the floor areas to the older population. So if if it's an issue with the commission, the chairman needs to take a consensus of the commissioners. Uh let me go through the eight and then Mr. Chairman, you can take it.
Once we get in motion, we can have a discussion.
Uh provide sidewalks along the entire frontage of the property to promote pedestrian circulation. Provide adequate sight lighting along the main entrance drive, which is dark sky compliant. Provide appropriate traffic signage on the secondary axis of Judd Road. Provide additional onsite parking to accommodate both tenants and visitors. That the final detailed site plan submitted with the S E P application shall be substantially the same as the conceptual plan as determined by the commission. Seven, the applicant submitted a traffic impact assessment and development impact analysis as reside as revised as part of their submission. The applicant offered and the commission accepted the applicant to be the oversight agency for the affordable housing units in this development to ensure compliance with annual reporting and income verification. Now therefore, it be solved consistent with the general Connecticut General Statute eight dash three and the Monroe Planning and Zoning Regulations at a meeting held on April twenty-first. A motion was made and seconded following deliberations on April seventh, twenty twenty-two, voted in favor to approve the zone boundary change zoning regulations text amendments subject to the following stipulation, the submission of a special exception application, S E P, within a hundred and eighty days of this approval incorporating the conceptual conceptual plans into the detailed plans, including extending sidewalks along the entire frontage of the property, provide appropriate traffic signage on the secondary axis to Judd Road and provide additional onsite parking to accommodate visitor employee parking. Two, the applicant shall be the oversight agency for the nineteen affordable housing rental units to ensure compliance with annual reporting and income verification.
So Bruno is not here. Um do we vote without him or do we allow Dominic?
Dominic's seated.
Dominic would be seated and he would have to stay for the record.
Did you?
Had he is aware of the application and feels qualified to vote.
Have you been here for the?
Yeah.
I've been here and listened to the applicant, yes. Alright, then you can go ahead. I just have two questions to refresh my mind. There's nineteen affordable housing that they're going to designate as affordable housing.
That is correct, ten percent.
Ten percent. What is the threshold that they're going to allow as as affordable housing?
Threshold of what?
Of income.
Oh, that's determined by the state. That changes annually.
It's with the state.
Yeah, the state. It's based on the statistical area for the metropolitan area of Stratford, Bridge.
God designated. They're still going by the state.
State of Connecticut eight dash thirty G.
One more question, then I I know that I'm able to. You can ask as many questions as you want. The elevator issue. We're talking three stories on this.
Three stories, right.
I have an issue with that. Not not not, I know that a developer putting eight elevators there, they're talking in excess of a million dollars. It's a big item to swallow. Not providing elevators in this time and age. It's something to be thought about.
Do I allow to speak during this part or no?
No, no.
Okay, so then.
Are we ready to discuss?
Yeah. I think we're going to open it up.
Yeah.
All right, so you have any other concerns?
I'm going to piggyback right off of what he said about elevators. I'm going to flat out say I can't approve this about elevators.
Rick. We discussed this before, the elevators, before we close this close this meeting. And you said, now if we approve this or vote on this today, they don't have to put elevators in, right?
No, if you make it a condition, they have to put it in.
So we can make a condition. So there's no sense in me voting on this until we put this as a condition and get.
Well, we're talking about, is it a deal breaker for you or?
No, but you 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 can modify this resolution.
Most of the commission was on agreement that we, because it's three stories, and don't forget, we have volunteers here. We do not have, we're not hired people, we're volunteers. And so when the ambulance shows up, they show up with two people and then the paramedic shows up. If somebody's got to come down from the third floor, I don't care if they're old or young, you're going to have to require other people to come and help them get them down the staircase.
And there's plenty of young people that need to be carried out of house.
You're carrying those people down those flights of stairs, you know, you know, and the thing is, is time sometimes is real critical for a person that's having a heart attack or whatever. And so, I mean, it's you have three stories here and and really the plan should have had the elevators on it because it's three stories. It's not even just two stories, it's three stories. And so if that's a condition, what if, so we're going to put that in as our our approval that they have to have elevators?
If the if the consensus is that.
But I'm saying to you, but if we don't do that.
No, tonight you have to impose that.
We have to do all this tonight.
Yes.
So we're going to have to get this all written back up so that we can vote on it, right?
Well, you'll 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 add a another requirement to it that you have eight buildings. So you, the chairman has to get a consensus of eight buildings. Do you want all eight buildings having an elevator?
They're all three-story, right?
Right, they're all three-story.
They'll have to have elevators.
All of them have twenty-four units except for one that has twenty.
So we could require elevators in half the units, let's say.
Well, that defeats the purpose of elevators.
That defeats the purpose of elevators.
Oh, the concerns or drop it down to two-story buildings?
Right. I'm sure they don't want to do that. But I'm saying to you is that basically, you know, and I believe most three-story buildings have elevators.
Especially for residential.
Well, they they did not provide it in Shelton.
No, I understand. No, yes, they did. The Mark has elevators.
Okay, I stand cause it.
Yes, the Mark has elevators.
So I'm saying is that, don't forget, we have volunteers here to do this.
Oh, that was indicated in the in the record.
Right, and for people and for you to get that kind of people out there to take somebody down three sites, like to, they have to call the police department or they have to call the fire department in, they'd have to call somebody else in to help them do that. And then you have to wait for those people to show up to do it and it's just kind of a work, it's not.
Just just.
I was brought up at the meeting, I I would have addressed that way before we close this meeting.
Well, you you did.
I know, I understand that, but we couldn't get them to go forward with.
No, the consensus was to move forward. Now now you need the consensus. And do you want them all in all eight buildings or four as the chairman suggesting?
Well, they're all three stories, so I would imagine they all have to be the same.
I I mean, listen, I I I think it's a compelling argument. I hear it and I I may be taking the unpopular position here, but I think it's a decision for the developer. And I think that I would not hold this project up if he chooses to not put elevators in.
Well, I actually agree with you. I feel like this is a market-driven economy. If people don't want to live on the third floor, then they're not going to sell third-floor spaces. And if that happens here, then when he goes to the next town, they'll put elevators in or they won't pick three-story buildings up. But apparently the market is there for a three-story, non-elevated building. And that's why this has been for us.
Well, if we want to.
Mike, I don't think it's only all that.
It's market-driven. If if this will sell, they will build it.
But our concern's not the people buying it. Well, it is the people buying it. Well, maybe they think they want it, but people don't plan to, you know, need an elevator. You know, young people get knee injuries all the time and all of a sudden they're on.
Three buildings that are three floors that don't have elevators.
Residential in town? Yeah.
I'm not talking about in town, I'm talking about in general.
This is town, I mean.
Buildings that that do just fine and people manage to to get up and down the stairs and occupy these units and and thrive.
But they're they're residential in other towns. I mean, I know there's apartment buildings in the city that are six, seven stories and they're just block ups with no elevators. I understand that. But, you know, those are cities with.
And it's not like anybody's tricking these potential buyers. No one's tricking them and telling them they have elevators and then they show up and there's no elevator.
I don't think that was my concern about the people renting. My concern is about the people that we have to get there to take care of those people that are injured or that person has a heart attack. My my concern is that we put a more of a burden on the town to handle something like that when it would require three people to move somebody down instead of requiring six people to bring them down three three stories. So that's my concern. My concern is that I'm not concerned about who's renting it. They're going to rent it or they're not going to rent it. But my concern is if there's an emergency, then you have to rely on our staff, our volunteers and our thing, on our resources. So it ends up costing the town money and time and volunteers coming out and doing what they have to do and. And so it's basically, you know, that's what it comes down to. I mean, it doesn't come down to any of that. I, I'm not worried about anybody renting it and they'll move out if they don't think they have, you know, they didn't need an elevator or whatever. I got all that. My, that's not my concern. My concern is that we have a requirement for, we have volunteers, we're not paid people. And then you have to call more people out, more people out, more people out to move somebody. And say if you have somebody that's three hundred pounds that has a massive heart attack, you're gonna need like ten people to get them down a three flights of stairs. That's what my concern is.
But keep in mind, it's a, it's a residence we're talking about, not a hospice facility.
No, I know we're not, but I'm saying she was, well, you know, and, and, and believe me, and it's not that. I mean, you know, I've lost somebody in my business over a heart attack, you know what I mean? And so it's not like that that doesn't happen. It does happen and that person was fine. I walked away and boom, they're dead. So I mean, it's, you know, it's, that's the way it is. And I mean, and so you know, I, if it wasn't three stories, I wouldn't have a concern about it. When you get to three stories, it gets to be a big concern for me. And that's, you know, I mean, and believe me, it's a nice project. They're gonna attract a lot of people. They're gonna get good rent for these. And, you know, they have it well, well set up. And my issue is that, you know, we have to worry about who has to go out there.
Mr. Chairman, you have something? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Members of the commission? Applicant has agreed to provide elevators.
All right, then that settles it.
Okay. Then the chair will entertain a motion.
With that stipulation, Mr. Chairman.
Take all dollars, eight dollars.
R A A slash Z C A twenty twenty two dash oh one.
I'll make a motion to adopt R A A slash V C A two zero two two dash zero one.
With the noted stipulations.
All right, I have a motion, need a second.
Second, excluding the clubhouse. Make sure we don't accidentally force an elevator in there. I think it's.
Second for me, Ambrosi.
Call the roll, starting on my right.
Yes. DePonici, yes.
There we go. Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on. A request for an extension. I have a letter.
This is for the elderly housing, Mr. Chairman.
From, um, yeah, from the elderly housing. This is a request for a six month time extension to submit final site plan. This requirement is a condition of approval. The current deadline expires May the third, twenty twenty two. The reason for the extension is that the applicant is in the process of obtaining an encroachment permit from the, uh, DOT. Um, as you are aware, DOT, um, requesting certain site plan modifications relating generally to site access. Final DOT approval has not been obtained. So we're looking for a six month extension. Chair will attend a motion to grant six month extension. Or is there any discussion?
No.
I'll make a motion to grant the, uh, six month extension for S D P twenty twenty uh, dash zero five, file number one four five slash one nine five two oh one and two one one Main.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second from Ambrosi.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, starting on my right.
DePonici, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Okay, we have pending minutes now, April seventh. These minutes are before us. Everyone has had a chance to look over the minutes. Are there any modifications?
I don't have them. Mike.
They weren't distributed?
No, I don't have.
They were on the table here.
Yeah, yeah.
On the table tonight.
Thank you. Right here. You have them all. Get ready.
Okay, any modifications? If not, then, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the April seventh, twenty twenty two minutes.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call the roll, starting on my right.
DePonici, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Motion passes. Final matter, well, before we do final matter, uh, there's no correspondence as far as I know. Do we have any commissioner reports? Emma has no reports. Going to go to Land Use Staff. Do you want to go through this or do you want to wait for Joe?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Joe unexpectedly couldn't make it tonight. So we'll, we'll present it at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Just a reminder, we have a workshop on the affordable housing. Tuesday? Tuesday. April twenty sixth, five thirty.
That's where, that's where all of us, right?
Yeah.
Five thirty, next Tuesday.
Tuesday coming up?[1780.02]